We'll give it one more minute even though you're all waiting patiently.
Thank you all for coming.
All right, well, it is five thirty right on the dot, though everybody is obviously ready to go. So good evening and welcome to the 2022 Auburn Union School District Board Candidate Forum, brought to you by the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I'm Daniel Berlant, and along with Jackie, we host many of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce's various streaming events, including our parades. Hopefully you'll join us. We have one upcoming in December, Veterans Day.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. Anyways, coming up, more importantly, tonight, both of us are parents, voters, and I am a former board member of the Auburn Union School District.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Weston. I'm the CEO of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. Before we get started, I want to thank the city of Auburn for hosting this and allowing us to do it in the council chambers. I want to thank Grocery Outlet. If you haven't been there, it's a phenomenal store right here in the city limits. They donated all the food for us tonight so that we didn't have to charge for people to come in. And I want to thank ACTV, Auburn Community Television, for running the cameras and allowing us to do Zoom. And of course, I have to thank my friend Amy Lynn for being here and live streaming the entire event for us.
So tonight, we'll be introducing Auburn voters to the six candidates who are running for three seats on the governing board. They are all seated in order as they appear on the ballot. Renee Michelle Dowd, Julann Brown, Josh Terrell, Michelle Sierra Salmons, Greg Holt, Jason Wedge.
For a little background, the Auburn Union School District is comprised of five schools, which include Alta Vista Community Charter, which I went to, Auburn Elementary, E.V. Kane Middle School, Rock Creek Elementary, and Skyridge Elementary. Both Daniel and I went to Auburn Union, which is why we're so awesome.
At least that's what we think.
Yeah.
So the format for tonight's forum is simple. The questions are all from members of the public that were submitted to the chamber in advance. The chamber received a lot of great questions, but unfortunately, not all will be able to be asked tonight. None of the candidates have yet seen the questions, but will have the opportunity to answer the same questions and will each be given the same two minutes to do so. None of these questions are ours. We are simply here tonight to ask the questions from your potential voters. The order of the questions will start based on the order you are seated, and they will rotate to the right, for you guys, to your left, for each question. I'll publicly, I'll read the publicly submitted questions, and then Jackie will act with Amy as the timekeeper. Someone's going to have to keep us on track because there are a lot of questions and very little bit of time, so who better to whip whip us into shape than Jackie?
Unlike Daniel, who is never short on words, I'll use the timer to help us stay within our two minutes. Once the timer runs out, I'll stop you and move you move on to the next candidate. For our members of the audience, please remember that this is a nonpartisan event, and we kindly ask that you refrain from cheering, cheering, or any applause.
All right, with that, just like any good game show, let's get right to it. So first, we'll start with a two-minute opening. As I mentioned, we will start in order as you appear on the ballot. So Renee, we will start with you.
Hello, my name is Renee Dowd. I have been a parent of Auburn Union School District for at least six years. I, my, my oldest daughter actually started in Ann Arbor, Michigan, so I had a lot of differences to see when we came out here. Throughout the last few years, I became so passionate about what was going on with my children's education that I had to get involved. As soon as I heard that there were three open seats, I knew that one of them had to have me in it so that we could do the difference that our children need to succeed for their future.
Thank you, Julann.
First, the button, listen to Daniel. Hi, first of all, thank you for this forum tonight. This is really an important forum to have. My name's Julann Brown, and I have served on the Auburn Union School District since 2014. My husband and I, Ken, moved here twenty-two years ago with our sons Avery and Jeremy, now twenty-six and twenty-three. They both attended the public schools here. I volunteered from right from the get-go when we moved here in 2000. In the classroom as an art docent, I've served on leadership positions in the parent-teacher clubs at Alta Vista School and E.V. Kane. And I also led in, I also was able to lead and to serve as a district-wide budget committee and also serve to pass a parcel tax, a couple of parcel tax measures. In addition, I served as president of Auburn Education Foundation for two years. In my professional life, I am a county operations manager, as well as a business consultant, and I provide service to a variety of small and medium-sized businesses, businesses. Through my volunteer and advocacy work, I discovered that in order to really influence educational policy and funding, I needed to serve at a higher level, and that is why I ran in 2014, and I won the seat. After joining the school board, shortly after that, I was appointed and subsequently elected as a representative to the California School Boards Association for our region. My signature work there has been to advocate for fair and full funding of our public schools and also for local control of that funding. I'm a passionate advocate for public education. I believe high-quality education is foundational to our democracy, and having strong public schools is foundational to a strong community. My colleagues and I itself have served on the Board of Trustees, steadfastly through one of the most significant times of upheaval we've seen in our country. Our district was one of the first districts to open our schools, actually to implement distance learning. And then we were one of the amongst the first in California to safely return our kids into the classroom. Educational policy and funding is notoriously complex. I liken it to an onion. The more you peel it and get into the layers, the more you want to cry. Oh. I will stop. Thank you.
Hello, all. I'd like to thank all of you for coming. Community engagement is one of the most important things we can have, and seeing more and more people actually show up to meetings is huge for this community. So my family moved here in 1976. I went through Forest Lake Christian School and to Alta Vista, and then to E.V. Kane, on to Placer High School, where I was a member of the Key Club, always been a volunteer, basically. After that, in December of ninety, I signed up for the United States Army, served four years, honorable discharge. After that, I got out, eventually met my wife, had a couple of kids. They are at, at, well, let's start with, they started at Skyridge Elementary, where I started to volunteer again. I was with the Site Wordbusters, did that from kindergarten through second grade, loved it, absolutely loved it. And then when they went into third grade, I jumped on the PTC, became president of the Parent-Teacher Club at Skyridge for those three years. Then a certain thing that we know hit, a certain pandemic hit, didn't, wasn't able to volunteer quite as much. But now we had a vacancy. Someone stepped down from the board in May, and I interviewed with six others from the community, and I was appointed in May. So I have been on the board for about five months, learning, forging relationships, encouraging people to show up, to engage. It is, again, so important that we do so, all the stakeholders. I am professionally, I have been a waiter for seventeen years at one of the better restaurants in Sacramento, The Waterboy. And it lends to me meeting people and listening to what they need and making their needs happen, putting them together with what they, what they need. I care deeply about this community as an old-school Auburnite and our kids.
Thank you, Josh. Michelle.
Well, good evening. Many thanks to the City of Auburn, Chamber of Commerce, and all of you that took the time to be here tonight, and those to you watching on Zoom. I moved here from Lancaster, California, about twenty-four years ago. In, before I moved from Lancaster, I grew up in a small town in Ventura County, Fillmore. Some of you may know it. If you do, then you know that it shares a lot of similarities to Auburn. It's small, it's got about five elementary schools, and one high school that we dearly love, and it even has a railroad going right through the town, just like Auburn. When I moved here, I had wanted to resume my educational work career. When I was in Lancaster, I worked as a paraprofessional in a middle school with special ed children, and I absolutely loved it, and I wanted to continue that. Unfortunately, there weren't any jobs available, so I decided to take a temp job with the county. And twenty-four years later, I'm still in that same job that I got called into for the assessor's office. But throughout all this time, education has just been such a huge part of my life. I went to public schools, I worked in public schools, I met my husband, who is a teacher in public schools over in El Dorado County. I volunteered in his classrooms and other classrooms. I now teach property tax law for different assessor offices around the county. I've been on the school board for eight years. Of those eight years, I've served as board president for, of those terms. I look forward to, excuse me, I look forward to continuing the work. We've done a lot in these past eight years, but there's more to do, and I'm hoping that I'll have that opportunity to continue that work. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Great.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you. So a lot of Altus Theater tonight, and like Daniel and Jackie, I also went to Alta Vista, E.V. Kane, and Placer High, which does make me happy. So my name's Greg Paul. I'm from Auburn. My mom also went to Alta Vista, E.V. Kane, Placer High School. After Placer, I went to Sierra College, then quickly enlisted in the Marine Corps, spent about nine years doing that, including trips over to Iraq and Afghanistan, and a couple of years overseas in Germany. Came back, went back to Sierra College, got my associates, then I went on to Sac State, where I got a bachelor's in history with a minor in Middle East Islamic Studies. I'm currently working on a master's through the Air Force Command and Staff College, actually. And for just about four years, I've been employed by Congressman Tom Clintock in his Roseville District Office. I've got a daughter in the third grade here at Skyridge, where my wife went to elementary school. My wife and I actually met at E.V. Kane, so I've got a deep history here with Auburn and with the Auburn Union Elementary School District. What, what drew me to this position are some concerns I've had that have kind of grown, especially once I saw my daughter in school. Learning delays caused by the government response to COVID- nineteen. Sort of the national trends we're seeing in radical gender theory getting pushed down to the TK level, to the five-year-olds who are in TK. The critical race theory getting pushed as fact, and so that, that sort of thing has troubled me and made me want to get more involved. You know, so there are a lot of things that I think we can work on, but we just need to make sure that the focus is on the individual student. You know, treat everybody as an individual and give them the equal opportunities to, to succeed. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Jason.
My name is Jason Wedge, and thank you, everybody, for being here today, and I am a resident of Auburn since 2000. I moved up here in 2000, and I raised a daughter and a son in the public schools. They went to Auburn Elementary, and contrary to what you guys say, Auburn Elementary was pretty amazing because Sam Shug was the, was the principal. Leave that there. And so I've decided to do it all over again. They're twenty-six and twenty now, and right now I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old at home. So schooling is a lot different today than it was fifteen years ago when my older children went through school. I was very involved at that time and involved with all the field trips. I would volunteer my time quite a bit on the school campuses, and and I share a lot of my concerns that, that Greg has, and because I have children entering into the school systems. And as any parent wants, they want a place of learning that is safe and free from any kind of political agendas or ideology that can damage them. So that is the reason why I'm running, is for my family, for my children, and for all your guys' childrens, the community's children, because I've been talking to a lot to the community lately, and the same rhetoric that I hear from the community, no matter what spectrum they, they're on, they all have one common, you know, one common thing that they say is that there needs to be a change. So I am hoping that I can be that change that is so much needed inside our public school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. So our first question tonight comes from Lisa. She asks, please describe in detail your knowledge of the roles and responsibilities of a school board member and why you desire to serve in this capacity. Julann, we'll start with you.
Wow, in detail in two minutes. Okay, so the school board, the role of a school board member is to represent the community, the wider community, not just the school community, and to hold our district employees accountable. We set the vision for the district. We set policy that is sometimes handed to us by the state. Sometimes we, and we get to tailor it for our district. But we are there to set the vision, and we set the how, I mean, excuse me, we set the what, and our district employees are the how. They are the ones who implement the policy. So the school board member is, is tasked with making sure that all our children are learning, and we are staying to that vision, and we take a thirty-thousand-foot view of what a school district and how the school district is run. We also are representatives for the community. We need to listen to our community and bring that into the boardroom when we are making those decisions. We are the ones that hold our superintendent. We only hire one employee, and that employee is the superintendent of the district. So it is up to us to hold that superintendent accountable. She is the one who hires the rest of her staff, and she is the one who implements those policies. So it is, we have to collaborate with one another. It's a five-member board, so we do need to get at least three members on board for a policy or to pass any kind of resolution. So it's very important that we collaborate and work with one another and listen to one another, and also be willing to support whatever decision is passed on that board and, and handed down. So we're there to support the students, the families, and the staff, and, and to set that policy.
Thank you, Julann. Josh, same question.
A role of, so far, from what I've learned is we are a soundboard for the community. That's all stakeholders. Parents and teachers, children, staff, including other community members. Obviously, these kids are going to be in our community. We take these ideas, these concerns, occasionally even praise, and we form decisions about what we're going to do moving forward based on these, the input from the community. Like Julann said, we have one employee that is the superintendent, and so we are also very much our, a task is to, to give her direction when she needs it and hold account accountable, the superintendent. We do have to enact state and county policy, obviously. We, we are the ones voting, obviously. We have three out of the five, as she said. But we are not kings and queens either. This is collaborative. And so we, we do need to, it's a fine line. Sometimes we need to support the superintendent when we can, but we also absolutely must call out when things aren't happening the way we like it. And that has been one of the, I'm not going to say harder, because I knew what I was getting into, but that is very important to kind of set the tone for the district in a lot of ways by our vote. And so, again, we are a soundboard for this community, and truthfully, again, I, I'm so happy to see as many faces we are. We need more people showing up to our meetings because we need to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Josh. Michelle.
Julann said to, to sum it up in two minutes is, is pretty difficult, but I'm going to give it a shot. So being a part of a school board is, is being part of one governing body that sets the vision, the direction of the, of the district, voting on policy from the federal, state, county, local levels. It's a lot to take in. It's a lot to learn. A lot of legislative action comes our way, a lot of different community members, parents, teachers, our own students, which we definitely need to be listening to. Even our business and civic leaders are also involved. So when we come to the dais, it's not necessarily just I'm voting for my community. It's really voting for Auburn, and it's voting for our kids and making sure that we're giving them all the tools and resources they need through that policy. And yes, we don't run the district, but we set the vision. We collaborate on a strategic plan. We collaborate on local accountability plans, and we just make sure that our schools are being run as they should be. But again, we are out of the operational piece. We set the vision. We are at that, what Julann said, is that thirty-thousand-foot level. But at the same time, we absolutely need to listen to the community. So that is a big part of, of that role is really just listening and collaborating.
Thank you, Michelle. Greg.
Thank you. Well, an individual school board member has no authority, right? It's just one member of five on the board. So that's school board, the school members, the school board members are part of, is there to represent the community, translate the communities, you know, their ideas, their vision into that policy for the school district, as well as to incorporate the federal and state guidelines and other things that come down the, down the pike. So you've got to work as a team, not an individual in this game. And there's also a number of administrative duties that go along with it, too, along with that governance, the budgeting, setting the priorities for the budget, setting priorities for the school, and administrative disciplinary actions as they do come up to the board. And then also helping the community navigate the school system. So when this community is coming to you, you know, if it's something that you have to push back down, redirect those members of the community to the appropriate people within the school administration. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Jason.
Kind of want to redefine that question. The question is, what is the role of a school board, a school board member? And you know, we're, we're a board members of a school. Schools represent children, so ultimately, I believe our ultimate goal is to protect the children. And that is through policymaking. That is through, we have the right teaching in place that is not going to harm them. That's to keep political rhetoric out of the school systems and to make sure teachers are properly represented, make sure teachers are properly heard, make sure parents are properly heard. The community is properly heard. It all boils down to the children. If we're pleasing the state and following their rules, and it's harming our children, something is going wrong there, and that's where it needs to be turned around. So I would like to say my answer to that officially is to protect the children.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Let's go back to you, Renee.
Thank you. Um, I feel that the role of a board member is to be the voice of the children and the parents to speak up for the ones that either don't have the voice that they can or don't know what to say, what is required of our students, what needs to happen in our district to improve our, our everyday educational abilities. We, we need to work together to create a budget that isn't in the red, where we don't need to borrow so much money to create a tax problem for our future, for our kids' future. We need to get control of a lot of it, and it is absolutely a team effort. We do need to work together on this, and hopefully we do find a really good team that creates the education that our children really do need.
Thank you, Renee. Move on to our second question here. This one is from Bonnie. What are the priorities this district needs to focus, focus on? Josh, we'll start with you in two minutes.
For years, we've had declining enrollment, and so our focus right now is restructuring our sites. There has been factors both within and without the control of the, of the district on why things are going the other way, why kids aren't wanting to stay with traditional schools. We have five campuses. We have fourteen-hundred-ish kids, and that's too many campuses. And as much as I love Alta Vista and a couple of places, we have to do what we have to do now, because what we are ending up doing here is throwing out basically crap packages to teachers on, on their, on, for their, for salaries, because we are in the red. And so we will, the way I see it, and I've had a lot of discussions with, to me, it's crystal clear. Once we get the sites down to the number we need, we will gain efficiencies in both how many teachers are in classes, utilities, all kinds of things. That will start to actually balance the budget. We can carve off twenty thousand, seventy thousand here, this and that, but the truth of the matter is, is that's not going to work that way. So once we get to the point where the sites are streamlined, if you will, get the budget under control, we can actually start to offer better packages to teachers, which will add to the culture and the continuity of our education, because that's basically what's happening. There's so much turnover. People don't want to stay because you don't get to go to Mrs. Whoever's again because she's gone. And so right now, working to balance that budget and give real packages to teachers and, and more offerings to parents, because I don't think traditionally that this is working anymore. I think it's pretty obvious.
Thank you, Josh. Michelle.
I'll just start off by saying what my, my first three priorities would be. One of them would be student achievement. The second would be fiscal accountability and structuring, and the third would be student safety. All three of those go hand in hand. We can't provide for our kids if we're not fiscally sound. And we have been working on getting our restructuring and rightsizing in order, not just with our, not just with our facilities, but with our staffing. At the same time, we still have to keep our focus on educating our children with the best resources possible. Our kids deserve the best, the best in resources, the best in teachers, and the best in facilities, but they can't do that if they're not safe. And so that's another thing that we should be focusing on, is not just the safety of the walls within the schools, but making sure that they feel safe. It was mentioned a little bit ago that the schools that we grew up in are not the same as they are now, and that's so true. Education, this whole world is way different than it was when we were all growing up. And so those are things that we have to keep in mind as we make sure that we are fiscally sound, to make sure that our students are learning in a safe environment. So those are my three.
Thank you, Michelle. Greg, same question.
Michelle, I promise I'm not copying off your notes. So my, my, my first three priorities would be provide the opportunities for academic excellence for individual students. Then to work on the, 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 the structures, the facilities, and student safety, student faculty safety. So, you know, as far as providing opportunities for academic excellence goes, you know, I was looking into the district's information on the GATE program, Gifted and Talented Education. I thought it was a great program. I got to take part of it when I was a kid. I don't know how they snuck me in there, but there's a lot of great opportunities. But the most recent things I could find for our district now are from 2019, was a, was a form, and then a PowerPoint slide that suggested that maybe we should change GATE to also include not just those who are gifted, but those who feel that they are gifted and talented. And I can't figure out how that actually helps either student. It doesn't help the kids who are actually trying to compete and trying to pursue academic excellence. It doesn't help the kids who just feel gifted and talented and who are going to struggle with a harder program. And as far as the facilities go, you know, we do need to work on that restructuring, maybe realigning the schools. But of all the parents I've talked to who have left the district, who have pulled the student out, not a single one of them has cited the facilities as the reason why they left. It's because they don't, they, they aren't having their needs met. Their kid fell too far behind in COVID, and they're not having their needs met. They're not being helped with reading. Or they haven't been able to be accommodated to work for like a seasonal work schedule. Or they just feel that the charter schools in the area or private schools even further down in the valley provide better opportunities for academics for their students. So those would be my priorities.
Thank you, Greg. Jason, same question.
So was the original question, what's your first three priorities, or just, so the three was kind of added in there as it's kind of gone down the line?
I'll restate it. What are the priorities this district needs to focus on?
Gotcha. Well, I'm going to copy you guys, and as far as my, you know, my top three priorities down my list is support in-person learning, create a diverse and educational, rich environment and, and curriculum, and honor parent authority. And I want to add to that, recently, I was, went to a a meeting with the Auburn Union Teachers Association, and one of the things that I found out at that meeting is that I had no clue what was going on, and it needs to be a priority, is that I learned from the teachers that morale is really down right now. And that really concerned me deeply, because if morale is down within the teachers, it's going to filter down to the students. So I really comment on that, and I really believe that is a leadership issue, because I am So I really comment on that and I really believe that is a leadership issue because I am in leadership. And when morale is down, you know, when it's down, down the line, the only place you can look to pick up morale is up. And so I think that is a key priority right there is to bring morale back up within the teachers and it's going to bring morale back up within the students. And ultimately, you know, get the, get kids, you know, back into the district, um, enroll back in the district. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Renee, same question.
Thank you. So when I got into this, I actually started thinking, what makes me angry? What, what makes my kids happy? What, what do we need to do? We need to bring the smiles back into the classroom. We need to get the enrollment back up. We need to get the teachers morale back up or happy again, and we need to make the parents happy. There are so many that are not happy with what is going on in this district that it needs to change. So definitely we need to bring that enrollment back up to bring the teachers back up to a satisfactory salary so that they are satisfactory at the, the, teaching our children what they need to learn so that those children are in class every day, happy to be there instead of frustrated that they don't know what is going on because this, the, the, the computer didn't work for the fifteen minutes when the teacher was explaining the instructions or they missed the, the first fifteen minutes because there's no more bus and their parents had to drive them to school it, it around their work schedules. Um, it, it is definitely something that we need to work on. We need to bring those smiles back into the classroom and we need to have very happy parents, students and teachers.
Thank you, Renee. Julan will close us. Why not with you?
Okay, thank you. So, um, my priorities, uh, for the district over the next four years are to continue to focus on educational programs that inspire students' achievement and lifelong learning. I also want to introduce, continue to introduce and implement programs that, district-wide programs that address the high-needs students in order to close existing achievement gaps that we have. Uh, prioritize social emotional wellness, not just for our students, but for our staff and through our, for our community. And I want to do this through allocation of state and county resources, community partnerships and advocacy at the state level. This is very important, um, to me, and I do believe that that will help a lot with morale as well. Uh, fix the structural deficit that we have, and that does come right down to our declining enrollment and our facility usage. Since I've been in the district since two thousand and one, we have been in declining enrollment. I don't think there was a year, there might've been a few years, we might've gone up, but we have been either decline or steady enrollment. So this has been an issue that I have lived with. I went through a school closure in, with Alta Vista. So I know what it's like, but we are occupying too many buildings for the number of children that we have. And we are reaping the benefits of that right now. I, I say benefits, it's not really benefits, but we're seeing the results of that right now. And that is that our staffing ratios are off. We have some schools that have very big classrooms and some that have very small classrooms. We are having to implement combo classes where teachers are teaching a first and second grade split. When you consolidate your sites, you're able to maximize those staffing ratios. And when you are able to do that, you're going to be able to reduce your, your budget significantly in a, in a significant way. And that will allow us to actually start raising our teacher, our salary schedules, our staff schedules across the board so that we can actually parity neighboring districts because we compete heavily with the districts down the hill that have. They are starting to experience declining enrollment as well, but they have much bigger budgets and are able to pay higher salaries and it's hard to compete with. So those are my main focuses. Um, I'd also like to say that modernizing our facilities and making sure that they're safe and the kids feel safe in them is.
Thank you, Julan. We'll move on, uh, to our third question here. Auburn Union Schools has a general obligation bond measure on the ballot for repair and modernization of its school facilities. Sarah asks, do you support measure E? Why or why not? This time, Michelle, we'll start with you.
Yes, I do support measure E. And I say this as someone that has always seen myself as a fiscal conservative. For the beginning part of my political years, or at least voting years. I didn't have a lot of information on how bonds work. I just thought, well, if this agency can't figure it out, why are we giving money to them? And then I grew up and I started to learn more about the bond process. And I realized, especially with the most recent passage of measure G for Plaster High School, was that the facilities funding that we get from, or lack thereof, that we get from state, local, regional, federal levels just certainly isn't enough. And it's not about making our facilities pretty. I don't think that's what that bond is for. That's not why I would support it publicly. I'm supporting this bond because we need actual structural fixes in our buildings, all of them. And even though, yes, part of our fiscal recovery plan is to more than likely consolidate schools and close down buildings, the fact is we still own them as a district. And so we still are on the hook to be responsible to maintain them. But for our kids, and, and I'm not a parent. I, I think people, most people know that. But the fact is, I still need our kids to be educated and sound and structural buildings. I need them to have as many resources as possible so that they can serve this community and its citizens. So yes, I am voting for measure E and I hope this community does as well.
Greg, same question.
No, I do not support the bond measure. It's forty-five million dollars. Uh, I mean, absolutely not. Uh, there are a lot of things that need to be done. Um, and we don't need to necessarily modernize everything, put smart boards in every classroom and put electronics in every classroom, um, if we aren't already meeting the academic needs of the students. So we don't need just really expensive, high-tech failures. So, um, you know, I mentioned I was in Afghanistan. One of the things I did there, um, I was in civil affairs. And so I helped to, um, identify schools that needed funding and to work with the locals to get them built and use, uh, coalition funds to get those schools built and put things in the classrooms. We had really nice buildings. There were concrete that we paid for. Um, and then there was also students in other areas who all they wanted was a little bit of shade because they were in either just mud walls or outside in a field where they went to school. And they were very eager to learn. They were super motivated to learn. They wanted a challenge. Their parents wanted them to go there and learn. So it's, it's not that you need a fancy, expensive building. Um, you know, the priority is the student. The priority is the academic excellence. That should be our mission here and not spending all that extra time and resources on buildings and resources that we might not need yet.
Jason, same question.
No, I do not support measure E. What measure E will do, it'll ultimately hurt the families. By that, it is going to increase rent. It is going to increase burdens on families that are trying to survive with all the cuts and all the increases we're seeing right now. We're seeing inflation go up. So now is not the time to even be discuss borrowing any money. And so I do not support measure E. And I want to go back. So my wife is from the Philippines. I've been over there a dozen or more times and I've seen schools over there with great students that learn amazingly and they don't have huge budgets. They don't have huge facilities. It all boils down to the teachers, the quality and how they're taught. And just by throwing a bunch of money at it, thinking the problem's going away is the wrong approach to do right now. We've been seeing that across the state in several different issues. You know, um, without diving deep into homelessness, we just keep throwing money at problems, hoping it will go away. That is not going to solve the problem.
Renee, same question.
Thank you. No, I, I don't believe measure E is a good idea at all. Forty-five million dollars. It, it's literally going to make our children pay for what we are not able to control. We need to get control of the budget right now. We need to stop relying on technology. Honestly, it is part of the reason why my children are behind. The technology is not the face-to-face. The technology is not the one-on-one that these kids need to learn with. The technology is not going to assist them with the, the specific questions that need to be answered where the teacher says, go look on the internet. That is not where the solution to these issues are. We need to make sure that these teachers are happy and giving them a new facility is not what's going to make them happy. We need to make sure that they are happy with where they are and what they have and who they have to teach. We need to make sure that those kids are enrolling in our school and are happy there. That's how we're going to get this budget back up. That's how we're going to get more money from the state. It's not going to be from our community because the more that we ask from the community, the more the community is going to leave our district. That's basically what's happening with these, um, private schools and, and the charter schools. These kids are, these, these parents are choosing not to keep on going with Auburn Union School District. And if we offer them negative amounts of money, again, it will keep on happening and then it will not solve the issue.
Thank you, Renee. Julan, same question.
Yes, I'm absolutely one hundred percent behind this measure E and the bond. And here's why. Our school district has never gone out for a bond. We recently paid off thirty-eight point seven million dollars in debt that we had been servicing using an investment. And now that investment, the earnings off that investment are going to be able to help us continue our work on our facilities. We do not receive facilities fundings from the state. So the only way you really access funding from the state is with matching funds. So what that translates to is districts and areas that are able to pass a school bond are able to get matching funds from the state. So by not passing a bond, we lose out on money from the state in order to upgrade our facilities. Some of our buildings are as old as nineteen forty. We have portables that are well past their usable, um, lifespan that our kids are in. And if you walk into those, I walked into those classrooms when my son was in, at EVK in middle school. Those portables are still there. They stunk then and I don't think they smell any better today. So we need to upgrade our facilities. Where our children learn and where our teachers and staff work every day matter. Safety matters. Infrastructure matters. Having safe water in our schools matters. Making sure we don't have asbestos in our schools matters. And we need to address these concerns. We have an amazing maintenance and operations staff that has kept these schools going. We have kept our HVAC system going well beyond, long past their usable years. We were thankful to be able to replace this recently and thank goodness it was right before COVID. But we have roofs that need repair. We have leaking pipes in our schoolyards. And yes, we may be consolidating sites, but they all still belong to this district. It's important that we upgrade them so that whatever use they might, we might choose to put them towards in the future, they are in workable condition. And our kids deserve this. Our high school students deserved it. Our Sierra College has gotten a bond. Our elementary and middle school students deserve this as well.
Josh, we'll conclude this one with you.
Yes, uh, so I think Alta Vista was, uh, created, built in the thirties. Um, Auburn L was the last, um, site to get an upgrade, a renovation, and that was nineteen ninety-six. Um, I'm not interested in pretty or the absolute cutting technology, although I think technology has a place, but I understand what Renee's saying there. Um, I want to kind of put it in layman's terms for you. Um, twenty-eight dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of your home value. So if you have a million-dollar house, multiply by ten, so two hundred and eighty dollars a year, which at this point is two and a half to three tanks of gas, I believe. So I, kind of the way I like to put things in, in, in perspective. So from, if you own a million-dollar house, two hundred and eighty bucks. I don't think we're asking for too much there. We've never had a bond, as they say. And I want to bring up something else. As, as a parent of eighth graders at ED Kane who are into sports, our sports programs are a joke here. Our, our, uh, I, I don't want to be too mean here, but our facilities are not in good shape. Multiple other areas, Colfax, Bear River, anywhere down the way have feeder programs for sports. And we are hoping for an hour and a half at the ARD, if you're going to play ARD ball. Uh, I would like to actually put some money into our athletic facilities beyond just pipes and everything else. But again, two and a half to three tanks of gas for a million-dollar house.
Thank you, Josh. So this next question is a little political, uh, a, a, at heart. So I'm going to just remind all of us that with whichever side you're on, let's just, uh, keep ourselves, uh, neutral as we listen to each of the candidates. So be asked, in regards to pass mask mandates and imposed distance learning, do you feel that control over these choices should be dictated at the state level or discussed at the local level and opted by parents? Greg, we'll start with you.
Thanks for the softball, Daniel. Um, so, uh, no, uh, absolutely mask mandates, the distance learning, that should be administered at the local level. Uh, there's no reason why that was coming down as a dictat from the state. Um, at, at every level, the state of California overstepped, uh, its bounds. And in many cases did, the governor did over, overreach his authority, uh, during the COVID pandemic. You know, fifteen days to slow the spread turned into two years. So the, you know, the, the mask mandates, the distance learning, that should have been up to the people. Uh, the people can make reasonable decisions for themselves. Everyone in this room can make reasonable decisions for themselves, for their families. Um, and then be allowed to choose a school or choo-, you know, if the school district doesn't want to do that, let them choose a school that will let them. Um, resume, and as we've seen, you know, the mask mandates probably didn't do very much, especially for kids anyways. So no, uh, I oppose the mask mandates and I feel that that should have been up to the local authorities.
Thanks, Greg. Jason, same question.
What we saw in this last couple of years, we saw the authority of a parent being taken away and been given to by the state. So the state became the authority of their children and the parent had nothing to say because they had no choice but to put them in school. I believe this should have been a local level. It should have been a decision made at a local level and not just followed by the state. And we're starting to see the repercussions of that, of children that were masked for so long. You have third and fourth graders that have spent their whole entire, um, career in the public school systems with nothing on a mask on. You know, we're seeing speech problems. We're seeing all kinds of problems is going to start coming out. That data is starting to come out. It's starting to be available. And it all stemmed from, you had school boards that was unwilling to stand up and do the right thing and, and stand up against the state and honor the parent's authority.
Thanks, Jason. Renee, same question.
Thank you. Um, no, I actually think that it should have been the parent's choice from beginning to end. I worked in a facility where we didn't get to choose to stay home and work. We took care of the seniors, so we didn't get to choose if our kids got to stay home either. It, it was important for my children to be involved in school because they struggled so much as it is. One of them was a teenager struggling with social interactions in itself. Taking that away and just putting it on a computer made her fall so much more behind that she is basically at the same level she was when this started. My younger one is actually in speech therapy. The mask held her back to where she couldn't even see the enunciation of the words. How is she supposed to know who her teacher is if she can't see that face? How is she supposed to get that positive interaction and reaction if she can't see that smile? How is she supposed to learn how to react if she isn't able to see those visual cues that people are supposed to be teaching her at that age? It's not something that many parents can do, especially when they're working. They weren't able to stay home with their kids. What were those children going to do? There was a lot of parents that actually struggled not only financially, but with the education of their children because they were struggling at home with them. My, my children love listening to the teacher. I'm not a teacher. They did not want to listen to me to sit down and pay attention to this teacher. I am sure that I was not the only one that had this issue with these amazingly brilliant children that did not want to sit in one place with their parent. They wanted to go to school. They wanted to see their friends. They couldn't even see their friends. And when my youngest finally did get to see her friends, it was, hey, oh, hey, he. They didn't even know how to socially interact with each other because they missed it for two years straight.
Thank you, Renee. Julan, same question.
Yes, um, so one thing that we don't have the, the benefit is, of, is going back and seeing how things were handled the last time we had a pandemic. Of course, we'd have to go back to nineteen seventeen. So decisions have, were made that sent, um, children home for the, the pandemic. Um, we immediately, we were one of the first school districts to institute distance learning. Now, as a board member, we are subject to mandates from the state. Okay, we don't get to choose which mandates we follow. We don't. So, and when we talk about listening to parents and parent authority, my question to you is what parent do I listen to? Because when we were going through this, we were hearing from parents who were against mask mandates. We were hearing from parents who were for mask mandates. We were hearing from parents who wanted us to stay distance learning the whole duration. We were hearing from parents who wanted their kids back no matter what. I will not deny that this was not traumatizing for our, our students. This is traumatizing to our society. This was traumatizing to our teachers. Our job is to protect the kids. And it is also to be there and make sure that they are learning and make sure the most underserved students especially were able to get to school. So we made decisions as a board, the best that we could, going through one of the most uncertain times that we have ever seen. I am proud of the decisions we made. They were not easy. There were times I made decisions, that the board made decisions and we had one group mad at us. And we had one group mad at us and then we made another decision and another group was mad at us. We can't please everybody and it is important that we keep the community in mind when we are doing, these mandates are coming down. Now, I do feel that the mask mandate went a little long. It became too contentious because our, because it did become a contentious issue. It created a lot of disruption in our, in our schools. It caused a lot of social emotional problems for our kids and behavioral issues, and we are dealing with those now. But we had to do what we did and I'm, we'll stand behind it.
Thank you, Julan. Josh, same question.
Yep, masks pretty much devastated so many people, parents, kids. When the pandemic started, uh, being a guy that pays attention, um, at first, until we realized what it was, I thought masks were appropriate, but I quickly felt that they were not appropriate. Obviously, yes, you get mandated by the state, um, but I would, I would absolutely push back on that, push back on masks at this point. I have lots of friends from all, both aisles, um, and the vast majority of them wanted this over way before it was over, if you will, the masks. That being said, I would like to acknowledge a scenario where a teacher has, is immunocompromised, maybe 60 years old and has issues and I, that's a tough one to just force on that class right there for somebody who knows they could actually die from a, uh, from lungs. But we're talking about an actual, um, you know, you, you have a note from your doctor, if you will, not just opting in or out. I would, I would generally be pushing back on masks. I did, I, after we, we got a hold and we realized what it was, we, we waited way too long to get out of masks.
Thank you, Josh. Michelle, we'll conclude with you.
I absolutely agree that the state overstepped. Not only did they overstep, they gave us consistently contradicting information. There were several times during the first year, year and a half, where our superintendent and the board were ready to open up our schools. And literally hours before our meeting, the state came out with yet again, new mandates that were contradictory. So it made it impossible for, I think, any school board to, to govern. I mean, it took away the governing process from us. And yes, we wanted to make sure that our children, that our staff, that our community was protected. But then the mask issue kept going and it kept going and it kept going. Not just in our schools, but in schools all over, my husband's school, my nephew's school. And all of a sudden, it was more of a social, political issue and it should have just remained a health issue. But the fact is, once we saw what was going on at the state level and then hearing contradictory reports from the, even the federal level, I can see why not just parents are frustrated. I was frustrated. My job is to govern, not to be some sort of medical expert. So in hindsight, I probably would have pushed back a little sooner than, than later. But if we were to be issued out a mask mandate again, I wouldn't vote for it.
Thank you, Michelle. We'll, we'll switch gears now and let's talk about teachers. So Jennifer asks, what are you going to do to retain good teachers, especially at EV Kane? Jason, we'll start with you.
I would say first step is that um, there needs to be a good relationship with the teachers. You know, I told the story earlier about how the teachers felt, you know, morale was down. Now, I don't know if that was district wide or it was just at Auburn Elementary itself. So I'm assuming that uh, EV Kane is having the same issue. They're having a hard time retaining teachers and hiring teachers. And um, and I think first step right there is that uh, there needs to be a leadership in place that a teacher wants to come work for a district.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Renee, same question.
Thank you. Um, so this is an interesting one because in all honesty, a lot of people would want to say more money. Well, I don't want a greedy teacher teaching my children. I think that greed is a lot of the issue with a lot of other things not involved with the district. I think that especially like Jason was saying, if we really create a positive work environment for them with good and with good supervision for them, supervisors that actually care and that actually want to be there for the kids, for the community. And especially what I've noticed is a lot of the teachers that have been from the community from the beginning are some of the ones honestly that really do have that special spot in their hearts for our students. But I, I really do feel that we really need to keep on looking for a really good solution because greed is not the answer and we, we need to find something that's, that's going to solve it besides money.
Thanks, Renee. Julan?
Well, my short answer actually is we do need to pay our teachers more. It's just flat out that. Our salary schedule compared to the middle out of our neighboring districts is below what other teachers are getting. So I think it's important that we fix that and fix our structural deficit in order to do that. And so that we can really back up our teachers on that and all of our staff. So that is one solution, but that's not the only solution. Our teachers need to know that they're supported. They need to know that they can trust their leadership and that is the most important. Now, I know trust right now is down, not just in, in our district, it's in our society. So we need to build that back up. We need to provide the social emotional supports that all our staff need and our kids need. So that will help as well. We need to work on our facilities. Everybody wants to work in a positive environment, in a positive, safe environment, and I want to make sure that everyone feels that. So those are some of the key things, but I think that the most important thing is, is really work and collaborate with the teachers, listen to them. We, we have worked really hard in this district to implement district-wide um professional development and so that there can be collaboration district-wide. We used to have pockets of excellence in our schools and I, they're great and we would celebrate it. But I wanted to see that spread throughout all our schools and see that these best practices are being spread. So we have instructional coaches now in place that help support our teachers. I want to see more of that kind of innovative thinking and implementation going on in our district so they, they feel supported, they feel heard. And um, and that is how we will retain good teachers.
Josh?
Uh, I hang out with quite a few teachers uh in my regular circles and so I have lots of talks with them. And yes, uh, money is an issue, uh, certainly here compared to other districts. But a lot of what it comes down to is the teachers need to feel valued. They need to feel like what they're doing matters. And every now and then, maybe even a little, a little praise, a little bit of acknowledgement when they're doing the drama club or this and that. I don't think we have been great at that. I'm not saying we have to run around championing teachers all the time, but there's a point where if you want to have culture built, they need to stick around and that is both feeling valued and uh, and being paid properly because they really are not. Um, also, something that I've been trying to work on from my one vote or angle on the board is strengthening the teacher to principal to superintendent uh command structure, if you will. Even immediately, uh, being a member of the board, teachers would, and it's okay, it's legal, it's all good because we're stakeholder, we're soundboard. They're jumping, uh, they're jumping principal and superintendent to the board and talking to us first. And while again, that's totally a doable thing and we need to hear, we really need to hear everything. It doesn't strengthen the relate, the, the leadership from the, to the principal, to the superintendent. And so I really been trying to push that. Again, though, it comes down to retaining teachers. We're starting almost from zero. We lost like 18 teachers from EV Kane. But I will say as kids, uh, you know, maybe I have an inside scoop on EV Kane. There's a little bit of a better feel in some ways too, but it's just the beginning. But it's a combination of things. They need to feel valued and they need to be paid better.
Thanks, Josh. Michelle, same question.
I'm going to lump and use the word educators because it's not just the teachers that are feeling downtrodden or the low morale. Because we need to retain not just our teachers, but we need to retain every single educator. Most of our classified staff can actually work at McDonald's for more than what they would be earning at our schools. And so it's not just money. Yes, absolutely. Should we, should we be compensating our educators at a higher rate? Absolutely. Speaking as a former educator myself, and I'm also married to one who's been in the industry for 25, 26 years at a middle school. I know firsthand how hard it is. It's even harder. So how do we retain these teachers? How do we retain educators? Again, salary, respect, value, listening, providing some solid leadership and providing that support. Making sure that they know what they're doing is making a difference. I know every now and then my husband comes home so frustrated because it's the kids and, and, and just making sure that, you know, he was helping parents out with their schools and with their schoolwork. Or maybe there's admin that, you know, just decided to lump on an extra meeting as he was walking out the door to come home. And then a few days ago, we were at a local establishment here and all of a sudden he got a tap on the back and it was a former student who was one of his little rambunctious kids who since grown up, went to the military and just thanked him. And it seemed like all of that kind of went away for him and I saw that look on my husband's face. I want to see that and I want to make sure that our teachers feel that every day and that they're not waiting for a student to come in years later. We need that respect for our educators.
Thanks, Michelle. Greg, we will end this one with you.
So as far as how are we going to retain the best teachers, uh, I'd have to start asking, uh, you know, individually. There's no one size fits all solution. As far as one size, what would I try to push towards though? Is developing that culture where you help those teachers feel a little bit more ownership of their classroom. That they aren't just doing what's being pushed on them from somewhere else, from somewhere higher above. Um, as everybody's kind of hit on, you know, teachers, they're not in it for the money. Yeah, they should be paid, of course, and they should be paid well, but that's not why they do it. They do it because they love teaching. They love these kids. And so we want to reward that, make sure they have some ownership of their classroom and, and are uh, supported by their administration. Um, and then also um, work on providing some stability and continuity. Over the last few years, uh, we've seen a lot of teachers leave, obviously, but we've also had so many changes. And as you alluded to in the last question, we had things changing constantly during COVID. And I think that's kind of thrown a lot of people for loop. So we've got to make sure that that doesn't become a new normal, right? Where we're just constantly changing things on the fly. So um, I'd like to provoke, promote in an environment where teachers have a little bit more ownership of their classroom, where they feel supported by the administration, uh, and then uh, where we can provide some stability uh, in that system.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, recently, the Auburn Union School District Board adopted an equity statement. So Kendrick submitted, do you support equity in our public school system? Renee, we'll start with you.
Um, so of course I support equity in our system. Now, the equity statement is a little bit different than that. It is trying to include basically all the different aspects of any student that we may have. We need to make sure that all students are taught and all students are taught fairly, of course. We need to make sure that we give them the best opportunity that they have because we are such a small, special area that we have that ability to do that for them. We, if, if, if they need more of a one-on-one, then we should be able to, to be able to give that to them because we are from Auburn itself. Especially I, I do. I think that at the same time that equity is important, I think that looking at the actual Auburn Union members is a little bit better.
Thank you, Renee. Julan, same question.
Yes, well, of course I support the equity statement. Equity just means making sure that all kids get the resources they need so that they can achieve. And every day we have walking through our doors, children that come from all walks of life, different languages, different ethnicities, different cultures, different family structures, different family moral values. Our job at the district is not to judge where they're coming from. Our job at the district is to take them in and provide them with the best education that we can so that they can become, they can thrive, they can learn and they can become contributing citizens to our society. So that is, that is our charge. So we do need to accept all students as they are. They come in with deficits, they come in with pluses. We need to make sure that they are getting what they need to achieve their absolute best. And that is what equity is about. It is not giving some child's resources at the expense of another. It is making sure that each child is treated individually, accepted for who they are and for whatever family background they come from. And we tell them, we are going to teach them and we're going to engage them in our curriculum. And how we do that is make sure our curriculum recognizes their culture and, and maybe their family history and how they are represented in this country. We are a big diverse country. We have a lot of diversity in our district as well. And it is important that everyone feels like they belong and that they are feeling heard and cared for.
Thank you, Josh. Same question.
Yes, absolutely. I support equity and that equity statement um, that my fellow board member Jamie Ross brought uh before us and worked on. Of course, you must meet the kids on their level. The, we make every decision with the heart of the child in mind, correct? And you have different levels of, of where the students are at. And so I have kids that are in the honors at EV Kane. I personally was at Gate at EV Kane along a different time zone or era with, pardon me, with Greg. But um, I think we need to always bring up uh, the people, the kids that are having a harder times regardless of ethnicity, socioeconomic, anything, but I also think that we need to um, remember that there are kids that are really bored in school as well. And um, I understand the argument um, that, you know, well, they're already doing well. Well, when I was younger, America used to be pretty high up on the uh, on the education uh ranks, if you will. And I, we are far from that now, as I think we are all aware. I think we need to also remember um, the kids that want to strive a little farther, that um, that need to be challenged more. But again, equally with the kids that need to be brought up.
Thanks, Josh. Michelle?
I was a gate kid too. So I understand the, yes, first of all, I do support, I did vote yes on the equity statement and, and I support it. The issue is putting it into practice and giving those kids, all kids, whether or not they need some extra support at whatever level that they're coming in, whatever cultural foundation they're, they're coming from. The fact is, we have kids that do need a little help, a little bit more than others. But again, as my colleague mentioned, it's not at the expense of yet another student. And that doesn't just go for our special education kids, our English language learners, but also your kids like me and Josh and Greg that I, I, I did get bored in school because I did not have that. I, I didn't have that approach from my teacher who said, well, you're already in gate. You don't need any extra help. The fact is, I wasn't looking for extra help. I was looking for extra support. Because when you're feeling different, no matter what level you're at, what, where you're coming from, from home, rich, poor. The fact is, if you feel out of place, you need that support. And that's where that equity statement comes in. So now that we have it, we need to make sure that we're practicing what, what we just passed.
Thanks, Michelle. Greg, same question.
So equity is being used in so many ways now that it's almost, you almost want to think it's kind of meaningless or that it's synonymous with equality, but it's not. Equality is equal opportunity. I apologize for using the, the word and definition, um, but, and then equity is equality of outcome. That's what it is. It's not this word salad about all these other things. It's about equal outcome. It's a lot easier to pursue a lower bar than it is to pursue a higher bar and bring everybody there. So no, I oppose equity. Uh, equity is repugnant to liberty. You know, you can have equal opportunity, but nobody can force equal outcomes unless it's at the expense of somebody else. So I oppose equity. I'm very much in favor of equality and equality of opportunity, equality under the law and equal treatment to all students and families. You know, this statement um, talks about removing obstacles accessing educational opportunities. And you know, it, it makes me ask, well, what obstacles has the district imposed? And if the district hasn't imposed these obstacles, then what power and authority does the district have to remove any perceived obstacles? So is this just pandering? Is this just a, uh, is this just virtue signaling? Because this is what we're seeing from the state and what we're seeing in current academic trends and academia, especially since 2020 where the hit, the buzzwords are, you know, equity. So it seems to be like it's more just virtue signaling and uh, no, I oppose equity.
Thanks, Greg. Jason, uh, we'll conclude with you. Same question.
You know, it's interesting you bring this question up because um, recently the Auburn Journal reached out to all the candidates and one of the questions on there was um, um, our thoughts or do we approve the uh, equity statement that was just um, passed by the board? our thoughts, or do we approve the equity statement that was just passed by the board? So immediately I got on the website and I could not find this equity statement on the board. So I actually went to the district office today and, and I asked about it. And I was told, oh, it hasn't been uploaded yet. And I, please can you email it to me? And I can tell you, I got that statement probably about three hours before this event came tonight. So I don't appreciate that question. I think that question is, is, you know, asking, you know, what's inside that bedroom? And you haven't even entered that bedroom yet. And so, so I'm going to kind of, you know, side with a lot what Greg says on equity. I think that is being used as a, you know, to trap the three of us up here that have no clue of what is on that equity statement and, and what the words mean behind it.
Thank you, Jason. Our next question here is, how have you or will you address the needs of the high achieving students? Julan, we'll start with you.
Certainly. This all also falls right into the equity question. So how do we meet the needs of high, say that again, I'm sorry.
Eric asked, how have you or will you address the needs of the high achieving students?
Yes. Okay. So how we do that is we make sure that we have differentiated learning in our classrooms. So what that means is again, you are making sure that the kids that are high achievers are engaged in their learning and want to go further and go deeper with that learning. So it's very important that teachers are aware of that and, and are able to give them what they need. So we do have, I know that our Gate program, we were in the process of revamping it in 2019. And unfortunately, something happened in 2020 that kind of stopped all of that from happening. But we do, are addressing our high achieving students. I like to refer them, refer to them as rapid learners. And I'd also like to address the, that was brought up earlier about that somebody can be in the Gate program if they just feel like they're talent, gifted and talented. That's not really the case. What it means is that they can be self-referred into the program or parents can refer. It doesn't mean they automatically are in the program. Because we know that gifted and talented actually can represent, be represented in many different ways. And a lot of times that's not captured by a test and it's not captured in the classroom and, in the, in the confines of the classroom. So I just wanted to address that issue. But I do think it's important that our teachers are given the resources, the training, and our kids are given ever opportunity to, to pursue their learning at the level that they need. And that, and one of the best ways for high achieving students to learn and achieve.
It seems to be disturbing the other ladies there.
Okay, thank you. How, one of the best ways that they can learn is also is in teaching other kids so they can actually work and collaborate with other kids. And, and that is another incredible way for our kids to learn in the classroom.
Thanks, Julan. Josh, same question.
When my kids were at Sky Ridge, the, the testing for Gate, I think started in about second grade. But there was a little bit of a disconnect. The, the parents of the kids that were supposedly recognized, you weren't going to get anything until you got to EB Kane. So that would have been years. I feel like, well, at Alta Vista, I was in a combo, fourth, fifth and sixth Gate class. It's only basically, I know we're starting to lead into other things now with Gate, but we need to recognize early. I think, so there was no Gate at Sky Ridge and so my kids were doing pretty well. And I asked the teacher, is there anything, I'll come in and I will, I will volunteer. Is there anything that you can do to bring up the kids that are showing a little more within your regular class? And she was like, I'm like, just anything? And so she found, she found something for me. It's called mountain learning. And I went and I taught about six or seven other kids a couple of times a week. I think that that should be more of a normal thing for teachers. Obviously, I don't want to pile more things on what teachers need to do. They have to handle so much, so many things. But recognizing early and maybe having something within a regular class to help those kids along. You know, again, you got people saying they're already doing well. So why, why, why do we need to do bonus for them? And I would say we've, we've got to change that, that feel there. Again, not at the expense of somebody else necessarily, but we have to recognize early, we need to bring them along and we need to have stronger gate.
Thanks, Josh. Michelle?
Speaking as a former Gate student that at times felt supported and did not. And it all boiled down to those resources. I had, in a couple of years, a teacher that had the resources, went the extra effort to make sure that I, along with other high achievers, felt supported and were motivated to continue learning. On the other hand, I had a year with a teacher that felt like having a high achieving child in their class was a burden. And I still carry that feeling of being a sixth grade kid, being told, well, you're smart enough. You need to learn how to deal with it. And that's from a teacher telling an 11, 12-year-old kid. So I really support having stronger resources, professional development, if, if our educators need it, to support those high achieving kids. Because these kids are going to go far, but if they're not given the resources, if they're not giving the support, it's going to go nowhere and we're all going to suffer because we'll be losing out on some kids that could be doing some great things for our community.
Thanks, Michelle. Greg?
I'm going to start by going back to this Gate question with the Auburn Union School District, though. And clarify, I didn't say that Gate was including children who simply feel gifted and talented. What I said was this came right off of a slide I'm reading from auburn.k12.us right now. That the proposed changes included consider an inclusion model, a rotation of offerings designed to challenge and engage students who have been identified as gifted, as well as students who simply, this is in all caps and bolded, feel gifted. So just wanted to clarify that. So what would I want to help provide more access for these higher achievers? You know, I also have to push back, though, on this equity as being something that helps high achievers because it's not. What we've seen around the country and in California, including last year in San Diego, is schools are cutting honors programs, they are cutting AP classes. The UC system cut the SATs as an admissions requirement in the name of equity. So if we're not pushing for academic excellence, if we're not requiring academics, you know, we're not going to be helping high achieving students if we say there are no standards. So I'd be pushing for more opportunities for some of these students. If we can put some of them in classes together, I know it'd be asking more from teachers. But as far as clubs and other opportunities for these kids to kind of self-lead, because a lot of these high achieving kids have very, varied interests and passions. And certainly there's no one size fits all solution, but want to provide more opportunities for them to pursue excellence.
Thanks, Greg. Jason, same question.
Well, we're hearing, we're hearing a lot here tonight that there used to be programs in place. There used to be this in place and what happened? How come nothing's in place anymore? So I think the first thing is to address is why it got dropped? And what do we have to do to fast track this is to get this back up and running? Because, you know, going back to one of my original statements, that schools is a place to protect the children. If we're not protecting the gifted children, you know, we are actually taking away from their gifting, opposite of protecting them. And that needs to be addressed, that needs to be addressed immediately. And, and as a board member, you have my word, that is something that I will address.
Thank you, Jason. Renee, we'll conclude here with you.
I absolutely agree that we do need to recognize the high achieving students. We do need something for them to show the value and the appreciation or they are going to leave our district. Their parents are going to realize how valued and gifted and how much another school will appreciate and be able to assist them with the future and career and goals that this family has for them. If we aren't able to even acknowledge that we don't have that in place for them, then how are we ever going to help them achieve anything? You were saying that we want to start at a young age. How are we even going to start at a young age if we are all keeping them at the low level that you were mentioning? It is a very good point. We need to bring everybody up. We need to absolutely bring our, our level of abilities up for everybody so that the higher achieving students want to stay with everyone there. There is no low achievement here. Let's bring everybody up so that all of our kids are smart. I, I think that's important. I, like I said, I think that if we do not show the appreciation for all of the students, but especially the high achieving, they will leave our district and then our enrollment will suffer more.
Thank you, Renee. Before we get to your final comments, I just want to take a moment and thank each one of you for taking the time tonight to answer the questions that many in this room submitted to the chamber in advance and many online did as well. You know, running for local office is not easy. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort and it takes a lot of energy. And the reality is the decisions that our school boards make impact the future of our community. So thank you for, for taking the time tonight and thank you for stepping up and running for election. We will have closing comments now in the opposite order from where we started. So remind us, why should we vote for you, Jason? We'll start with you again, two minutes.
So there's been a trend here that we've heard tonight. We've seen our schools are failing. The schools are failing our communities, our facilities are falling apart. We cannot retain or hire great teachers like we used to have. Students continue to leave our school in floods. Now, I'm not here to make friends, okay? I have a family, I have a lot better things that I can be doing, okay? I am only here because I want to bring in change that is needed in this district. This is my home, this is my backyard, this is where I'm starting. And I can tell you as a leader, a true leader, they will stand up and do the right thing, even if it costs them everything, including their reputation. Too many leaders we're seeing, they are scared to do the right thing because they don't want their reputation damaged because they have an alternative motive. And I'm saying, I'm standing here telling you, that is not me. And I'm speaking to the voters right now, you know, the voters on Zoom, the voters out here right now. It is your job, it's your opportunity to bring the change that I feel is needed at this time. Too many times we've heard from leaders over these last couple of years, my hands were tied, there's nothing I can do. So you have a choice. You can untie those hands or you can leave those hands, those hands tied. The choice is yours. Thank you.
Jason, thank you. Greg, closing comments?
Thank you. I don't like politics. I know, I know that seems like a joke because I work for a member of Congress, but I don't. It makes me sick. Local politics makes me sick to my stomach. It really does. I am running for this position because I identified problems. I saw things that I didn't like. I started getting involved, volunteering in the class, volunteering in the school. And I feel like if I don't try to be a part of the solution, I've got no right to complain about it. So that's why I'm running. I want to help every student achieve their, achieve what they can, the best academic excellence. I want to provide those opportunities to every individual student. And, you know, just as Jason alluded to, too, you know, we've had so many issues where people have said, oh, my hands were tied. I couldn't, you know, the expert says this, we have to do it. So I just want to end with a quote from British Prime Minister Lord Salisbury in 1877, who offered that no lesson seems to be so deeply inculcated by the experience of life is that you never should trust experts. If you believe the doctors, nothing is wholesome. If you believe the theologians, nothing is innocent. If you believe the soldiers, nothing is safe. They all require you, they all require to have their strong wine diluted by a very large mixture inspired of, a mixture of insipid common sense. And that's what I bring to this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Michelle, closing comments?
Yes. Again, I want to thank the chamber and the city for providing this opportunity. All of you here tonight, you certainly probably had other things to do and you came here and it means a lot to me. I've been on the board for eight years, but I've been involved in education for a lot longer than that. I'm no expert and I can only govern based on what I know. Have, have I learned some very hard lessons? Absolutely. The past two years, I learned really that I could not please everyone. It seemed like with every issue, there were people that were applauding the board and some that were almost picketing the board. But through all that, I've learned that the best way to solve these problems is to be listening. I've never stopped listening and I won't stop listening. I've also been very involved in our community. It's not just our parents and our students, but it's also our business owners because we're educating their future employees. It's dealing with our civics leaders, our city council, our supervisors. They want to make sure that the resources that they're providing, our city and county, are suitable. Our kids deserve the best. Our kids deserve to have a strong start in life. Knowing that I've been through the public school system, that I have a very good knowledge of what needs to be fixed and listening, I think I can continue to do the work. And if given the opportunity on November 8th, I promise I will continue to do the work. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you. Josh, closing comments?
There's interesting timing here with this election. I'm meeting the three new, newer candidates to me for the first time and hear what they have to say. They have a lot of great things to say, I would like to point out. But the timing is very interesting. We have the FRIP going on right now, which is your financial recovery implementation plan to make these decisions on these sites. And we are going to vote as a board on what is posed to us by the community from this FRIP by the end of this year. So what you're going to have is a board who is going to vote. And then you might have three new people come in. And while I don't want to play like they couldn't do a great job because I could tell they could do fine jobs, the chances that they don't like what was, what was forwarded and what we voted on is there. It's high. I, I don't know, it's there. And I think we would, that would be a, that would be really rough to try to deal with in the beginning of the year when we're already having all these issues. And so what I'm asking for your vote to be elected is that I can help shepherd through what our decisions are. And then to tell you the truth, which kind of echoes some of the, some of the things that have been said, I want to own these decisions, whether they are right or wrong or perfect or, or a little off. I want to be able to own them. And I have no problem people telling me, I don't like what you did or I love what you did. But the timing here is, is, is rough with the major, major decisions we're about to make that will affect the district for decades and I want to be a big part of it. If you ask around, I'd like to think that you'd hear that I've been providing a steady hand. I'm all about just being informed and making informed decisions, completely non-political. And I hope you can see that I'm being honest with you tonight. I really appreciate you being here and engaging in general. And I hope you come to our meetings regardless of whatever this election ends up. Come to the meeting, speak. We want to hear you. That is what a big part of what the board is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh. Julan, final comments?
Yes, thank you. Again, thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight and for this opportunity. And as I mentioned before, we've been through some, some of the most difficult times for the educational community and for our society in, in general. It's been a time of pandemic, increasing political divisiveness, increased insecurity both at home and in our schools. We've had climate disasters that created challenges for our public education. So this is what I know. I know that we have dedicated, talented staff that give their best every day. I also know that they don't get paid enough for what they do. I know that it's our job to, and to provide the necessary resources so that each individual student gets what they need to thrive and gets what they need to reach their full potential. Here's what I don't know. I don't know what the state legislature is going to do in conjunction with the governor when they, they do the budget next year. I, I don't know what might be the next crisis that our schools face. It seems like every year there's something new for us. At this moment, I don't know what sites might be closed and what the grade configurations of those sites might be. Whether or not we will experience an enrollment drop or whether or not there will be an increase. I don't know what that's going to look like next year. But here's what you can count on me for, if I'm reelected. I'll continue to provide steady, calm, collaborative leadership as we navigate these uncertainties. I will show up ready to make the difficult decisions and I will own those decisions. I will help usher reform and change as I see necessary, whether it's at the local level or at the state level. I will continue to advocate at the state level for public education, for full and fair funding and for local control of that funding. And here's why that's important. I actually have a voice right now. I've served on the legislative committee. I, recently they reached out to me to see if I wanted to participate in a panel to provide school district. recently, they reached out to me to see if I wanted to participate in a panel to provide school district input on a bill that's been that was passed and they want to gauge how it's affecting our districts. I have a voice that's equal to a board member from LA Unified School District.
Julan, thank you very much. Renee, close us out.
Thank you. And thank you, by the way, for everybody being here, especially on Zoom. We absolutely appreciate it. I know especially before this, I was struggling to even try and get involved with the board meetings. It was either an issue of being interactive, being online, the Zoom meetings, being able to place your question or even knowing when it was that the board meeting was being taken place. This week, by the way. Absolutely. It is important that we are doing this for our students, for our children. They are the future of Auburn. We are creating what this town will look like in 20 years. Do we want it to be a successful town with successful employees and and business owners? Or do we want it to be like those other cities that are struggling down in the in the the southern parts of California? It's it's a very important thing that we really need to focus on, what is going on and what we need to do for our students. And that is what we are going to really fight for, for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Renee. Appreciate that.
Again, I want to thank you guys all for coming, including all the candidates. The Auburn Chamber is proud to have hosted this tonight. If you're free next Monday, we'll be back here, same location for the City Council Candidate Forum. That's October 17th at 5:00 PM. Once again, I'd like to thank the City of Auburn for allowing us to host it here, particularly Amy Lind, the city's election official. Grocery outlet for sponsoring the event, so it could be free to all, and Auburn Community Television for working their tails off up there. And I also just heard that it'll be shown on the Auburn Community Television channel as well. So thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
So again, thank you to all the candidates. Thank you for joining us these past couple of hours. Thank you for being informed. These decisions matter. So thank you. Have a good night, everyone.